I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united home, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It seems like we haven't had a board meeting in so long, but I know we just had one last month. But, uh, welcome, 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 everyone. Thank you all for being here. And so, um, I ask that all board members, please let's remember our board norms. Uh, we just called meet to order. So, under provisions of the public meetings law of the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, intensive agenda for this meeting. A copy of the notice of the agenda for the meeting was posted on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at the administration center, 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were sent to radio and television stations, newspapers, to all municipalities and schools in the district, and posted on the district website. May I please get a recommendation to adopt the agenda as posted?
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. This portion of the meeting is allocated to a short video for the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest that board members, to board members in the community.
Board election, which is only a come to the October edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's board report. We begin with a look at filing for the next school board election, which is only a couple months away. There are many things districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Director of Board Development, Catherine Whitaker, says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So candidate filing doesn't open until December. So you have technically two months to let your community know that you do have an opening on the school board potentially. Um, you have time to let them know what it looks like to be a school board member. Um, what does it mean to file? How do you file? Um, and just to give them information about your school district in general. We've created a presentation that, um, superintendents, board presidents can use to inform the community about their school district as a whole, and then also about what it means to be a school board member.
Whitaker also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
So on our website, we have a ton of information, some written by lawyers so that they know how to appropriately file and run a campaign, um, but some written by us, just again trying to outline what it does it look like to be a school board member? What does it feel like to be a school board member? What are your responsibilities? Um, so we've created a module for candidates that school districts can sign up for and then give the login information to those candidates. So they can go in and have a better understanding of now that you're a candidate and you filed, you know, what does it look like to be a school board member? It's interactive, um, gives a lot of information about the state and what it means to be a school board member.
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. The start of the next legislative session is also just around the corner. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brand Shields, says that the upcoming Fall Delegate Assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session.
Coming up later this fall is our Fall Delegate Assembly, held on the Friday of Annual Conference. This is an important opportunity to have your district's voice heard in setting education policy for the state of Missouri. Every member of MSBA is guaranteed at least one delegate in our assembly. Now is a great time to make sure that your delegate's contact information is up to date with MSBA, so they receive the latest news and information for the delegate assembly. As we said earlier, legislative session is just around the corner, beginning Wednesday, January 3rd. Make sure you are signed up for MSBA's Legislative Voice Newsletter, published weekly during session, for the latest information and advocacy actions to help you advocate for your students in Jefferson City. As elected officials, your voice is crucial for MSBA to succeed in our legislative goals for the benefit of our students.
And as Brand said, the Fall Delegate Assembly will be held during the Friday of Annual Conference. If you haven't registered for the conference yet, it's not too late. The 2023 MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the Education Expo, the Student Showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. The board president will read aloud any comments that have previously been submitted. While all the comments will be included in the board materials this evening and may be found under public comments, the board may limit the number of comments read aloud based on the length of or repetition. Prior to public comment period, in-person participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topics to be addressed, and will be answered, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board may not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. Responses to public comments can be found in the meeting's Agenda section of the district website within 14 days of the meeting. For our first public comment of this evening, we will have, um, Mr. Doug Jack Jackson, I'm sorry, talking about educational outcomes.
Hello? Hey, it's on. It is on, right? Yeah, okay. Um, I want to take a moment and run through some numbers. I'm gonna talk about some of the statistics from three of our high schools. Innovation is difficult to get numbers for, so we'll set that one aside for this exercise. School A has a past AP exam rate of 2%. School B, 2%. School C, 5%. Math proficiency, school A, 13%. School B, 0%. School C, 3%. Science proficiency, school A, 24%. School B, 3%. School C, 23%. Graduation rate, 98% for school A, school B, 91%, school C, 95%. State rank, school A, 75%, school B, 299, and school C, 84. I think it's clear that school B is McClure, and my daughter is one of those 0% that are not proficient in math, or that are, yeah, 0% that are proficient in math. I failed her too. Can you tell me which of the schools are school A and school C? School A, um, has a graduation rate of 98%. School C, 95%. School A has a math proficiency rate of 13%, and school C is 3%. Would it surprise you to learn that school A is not STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley, but rather McClure North? It's also unlikely that my son is in that 3% at STEAM, so I also failed him. I'm not pointing out these numbers to call out building staff or anything like that. They have to play the, they have to play the hand that they were dealt of kids that come up through our system. We need to do better. We need to do better as, at parents, as teachers. We need to do better at pre-K. We need to do better in all of our early education. We need to do better, or, yeah, we need to do, we need to set up our kids for success from the beginning. Once they get to our high schools, their paths have already been determined. Once they, uh, we need to be bold. We need to try new things, but first, we have to make sure that our kids have the foundation of proficiency in math, reading, and writing, from which they can be, that they can build upon and be successful as they come out of our district. I certainly don't have all the answers, but what I do know is that we have to do better as parents, as educators, as administrators, as a school board, and our school, entire school community. And by the way, these numbers are for the, from the, uh, US News and World Report, uh, ranking of, of schools. Thank you.
And Dr. Davis will get back and speak, in touch with you, Mr. Jackson. We will next have Laura Washington talking about cheerleaders and grade requirements.
Hi, uh, my name's Laura Washington. I am a mother of six children that have, uh, the fourth one's getting ready to graduate from McClure North High School. Uh, she is a varsity cheerleader for the school, and right now, as of the day before homecoming, they have not been able to cheer. They did not cheer at homecoming. They've been sidelined, all because two girls do not meet requirement of grades, while 24 other cheerleaders do meet the requirements. But due to discrepancy between the parents of those two students and the coaches, it is now affecting our cheerleaders, and unfortunately, specifically our senior cheerleaders, who cannot participate, and they've worked really hard for this season, and they're being ignored by upper management, board members, all of you guys, because of a discrepancy between parents and the coaches. And I just wanted to come in here and voice my opinion that I just hope you guys will support the young ladies and the one gentleman that's on the team, and help them get back on the sidelines as quickly as possible.
Thank you so much. Dr. Blan will be speaking with you. We next have Elise, Alyssa Hill.
Alicia.
Alicia, thank you. All right. Alicia, um, Dr. Blan can speak with you if you would like to speak with her personally. And, um, last, oh, well, we have two more. Um, Mr. Muhammad. And can you state when you come to the mic what you'll be speaking about, because it's not on the floor?
Uh, does it start? So, I have some concerns about math education and, uh, just a few other concerns. So, um, my name is Rahim Muhammad. I'm a parent of children in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. When our district does things right, I think we should be commended. So I applaud the district, uh, for the awesome Red Tails Aviation Program. I applaud you for having STEAM High listed as one of the best schools in Missouri, and I applaud you for doing the work and adopting the anti-racist standards. As a parent and taxpayer, I have a few concerns. One, I'm concerned about math education. Right now I have a son who is in the 90th percentile last time I checked, and I know, um, math is important, and I want him to be able to excel. Um, so I'm concerned about math vacancies in the district. I'm concerned about the vacancy at STEAM Academy. Um, I love seeing my tax dollars paid for students to earn college credit at UMSL and St. Louis Community College. Um, there's a percentage of my tax dollars that go to support special school district. North Tech is a part of special school district. North Tech is not an inferior school, and have many programs that parents and students can benefit from. So will my children, and those are some of my friends, have an opportunity to attend STEAM High School and North Tech in the near future? Is there a policy that prohibits students who attend STEAM High School from attending North Tech? Is there an unwritten policy that says STEAM High School students cannot attend North Tech? Has North Tech ever presented what they offer to STEAM, to STEAM High School and STEAM High School parents? My last point, or my last concern, if I recall correctly, uh, when the district reorganized, there were three buildings, all who scored within a range of each other, according to the building audit. They were identified as closing because of inefficiencies. Vote, Airport, and Mark Twain. I believe that was 2018. It's 2023. Vote in Ferguson has been repurposed. Mark Twain still open. Airport boarded up. I'm not sure Ferguson or Mark Twain would be allowed to be boarded up for four years, but somehow that's the reality of Airport Elementary. Equity is not wallpaper. We must continue to live it. What's the plan for Elper Elementary, and why hasn't it taken so long? This is personal to me, because that's my community. Still get my haircut there. Still have friends there. I still walk my old neighborhood to keep me grounded. And it hurts me because me going to high school in this district, I had to go by a boarded up junior high school every day to school. So I just want to compel you, indifference, we gotta, you have to do better. So I want to know the plan for Airport Elementary. Thank you, and I'm sorry for exceeding my time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Muhammad. Uh, Dr. Blan will get in touch with you and, um, Mr. Terry O'Neil. And our last comment came from a parent in the district, Ms. Nicole Barnes, and this is a write-in. "I have three children attending three different schools with Ferguson-Floreson School District, primary, middle, and high school. While each of their grades are different, the same problem exists at each school. Overcrowded classrooms disrupt the behaviors. Below basic academics, teacher and administrator burnout. I've seen these problems grow in intensity over in the, over the past nine years. What I have learned in the past two and a half months is that teachers can't remove problem students from their classrooms due to obstacles in the disciplinary process. Disruptive students are allowed to continue with their poor behaviors while the remainder of the class continues to fall behind. Each school administrator feels as if their hands are tied regarding discipline. They are unable to remove problem children even temporarily to an ISS setting. Instead, teachers are faced with addressing discipline more than educating. This is a repeat problem as each group of kids that didn't learn are passed to the next grade level without achieving basic skills for the previous grade. Title I meetings revealed 80%, 86% of all first graders at Wana Grove School, Primary School, started the school year off with below proficient reading skills. This is indicative of a comprehensive problem with, from the previous school year. Reading is a basic need of all schools, all school subjects. If the problem is not addressed immediately this current school year, then comprehension in all subjects will severely suffer each subsequent year. What is the point of testing if scores are not utilized to improve the educational process immediately? When does each primary school get the comprehensive remedial reading and math supporting needs to get and keep students on target? I understand that there is a shortage of teachers. The shortage will grow if dedicated staff are not given the support needed to succeed. Galileo benchmark tests show the exact educational deficit that has existed at, at the very beginning of the school year. From this point on, students below basic should have been given remedial help to be brought up to speed. We cannot wait to discuss our forum committees and take things under consideration. Each educator was hired for their skillset and ability. I will likely, I would like to strongly urge the board to allow each individual school principal and supporting staff to devise potential plans for organizing their teachers and internal discipline plans to better suit the desired outcomes of learning for all students. This may look like a parallel co-teaching in smaller groups, teacher loops, where a teacher keeps the same students over multiple grade levels across recess for physical reward, fresh class environment, and or hiring of aides for every class exceeding 21 students. Two months into the school year, my first grader is telling me he has not learned anything in class. Um, that's more personal. Um, I don't want to read that. So summary, requesting one aide per classroom to address disciplinary needs, extra bodies are needed in the classroom due to overcrowding, and no principals and current support staff cannot count as extra bodies. They are needed to perform their job roles. Requesting ability to add one extra recess classified as learning through play to address social emotional needs and aid in reducing classroom disruptions. Requesting schools' ability to submit exceptions to the standard disciplinary process, and requesting immediate reorganization of students of learning need. If there are 10 kindergartens, 10 first graders in the same reading and math level, clearly one teacher could work with them to move them on to target. And so, um, Dr. Davis, um, has already reached out to Ms. Barnes as well as, he will follow up. Alrighty, that is it for public comments tonight. Thank you guys so much. Oh, I was gonna get that. Anya, can you please come?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, during the first eight weeks of school, students have been learning, but teachers are stressed. Teachers have been doing their best to learn two new English language arts curriculums, which are You Fly and Wit and Wisdom, as well as completing the beginning steps of their professional growth plans, student learning objectives, administrating the Galileo Assessment, STAR Early Literacy Assessment, kindergarten entry assessments, lesson plans, classroom routines, and developing relationships with students, parents, and coworkers. Next week, certified staff will have a professional development day, followed up with a teacher work day, which would then take us into the following week, where teachers will work an additional six hours hosting parent-teacher conferences. Dr. Davis recently held a focus group with select individuals of the association discussing the characteristics that the association would like to see in the successful candidate for chief academic officer. The association plans to invite Dr. Davis to a building representative meeting to discuss the current stressors that are impacting staff and possible solutions. On Friday, October 27th, the district, along with the association, will host the first Support Staff Professional Development Day. For a few hours, support staff will come together at STEAM High to review policies, program opportunities, customer to review policies, program opportunities, customer service, and meaningful discussions and breakout sessions. The future of our school district depends on the board, Dr. Davis, the FFNEA, administrators, staff, and the community working together to make sure that we achieve our goals. Let us continue to encourage and develop strong scholars, remind staff that they are valued, listen to one another, promote personal growth, ensure the, excuse me, enforce the student code of conduct and be transparent. If we continue to put the students first and focus on equity and access for all, then the school year should turn out to be a prosperous year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, now can we have our disbursements, please?
Thank you, Dr. Graves. I wanted to acknowledge what Ms. Baylor said as well as some of the parents who've been calling. And I think I need to say this publicly to our community. All these issues I care deeply about. Education, math, ELA, all subjects. I spent about two hours, two and a half hours actually, the other day, about two hours over at Parker Road. And Brenna's been setting up meetings to meet and meet with all staffs across the district because teacher voice is critically important. And the other morning when I met with teachers over at Parker Road School, I just shared with them about our culture and climate survey. I put a video out. Because those, that feedback is very important to me and us so that as we devise plans for improvement, that we have the voices of the folks that's impacting. I don't have all the answers. I'll say that publicly. I don't think anybody has all the answers. But I think that together, as Dana said, it would be a successful year if we collaborate and work together. We also have an advisory council we put out for parents to get involved. And we've had close to 100 people who want to be a part of it. And that's amazing. So while I know there are challenges, there's so many exciting things happening also in our community. And the world needs to know. And we're going to keep telling it. We write our own story. You know, to the moms who are concerned about cheerleading at North, to folks who are concerned about performance at McClure and all over. Folks are working extremely hard. I'm in the schools. I know they are. Our teachers have been doing a phenomenal job in these first nine weeks of school, this first quarter. So the work is happening. And I know that we have places that we've got to work hard on and we're going to keep doing that. Nobody believes it any stronger than I do that a quality education matters. And that is my duty and my responsibility and my joy, really, to make sure that all of our children get a quality education. So these issues that you bring, they don't fall on deaf ears. The mom who Cindy, Dr. Graves read the email, I answer my emails pretty quickly, most time within an hour. She sent the email yesterday. I called her personally 20 minutes after she sent it. I didn't get her. She emailed me back saying, "Thank you for calling so quickly." But I left her a detailed message because I heard her tone in her email. And I wanted to talk to her. And we're going to meet at Walnut Grove. And we're going to resolve some of these issues. I can't tell you going to solve them all. Well, we're going to work hard to make sure our babies get a quality education. And by saying this part, we recognize last year the importance of reading. We put a stop sign up ourselves. Nobody had to tell us, we did it ourselves with the research around science of reading, that our students weren't getting reading instruction deeply. And they are now. They're good. Teachers are getting trained on UFLI, which is strongly phonics-based, Witten Wisdom as well. And it's so important. It takes time, but it's so important to make sure that quality curriculum is in front of our teachers. I've gone through the training myself. I'm a math teacher. Y'all know that. But I've gone through the ELA training myself so I could see and ask some good questions to help our children. So I just want you all to know that the board, myself, and all of us, we care deeply about the same things. And we're together. We're going to collaborate and work hard together. So thank you for that. And I really appreciate the folks who have signed up for the advisory council. And we're going to certainly be calling you in soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board Secretary, may we please have the disbursements?
Yes. Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $9,359,315.86. Operational disbursements, $3,841,695.31. With a total of $13,201,117.
May I please give a recommendation to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any of both. Motion carries. We will now have Dr. Jane Crawford, FFSD data presentation.
Good evening, school board. Good evening, community stakeholders. This evening, Dr. Higgins and I would like to present to you from the Support Services and Multi-Tiered Systems of Support area, the FFSD Discipline Snapshot for the school year so far. And this information is very fresh, hot off the presses. The discipline data is from yesterday. While we are the representatives today sharing this information, I want to acknowledge that the news we're sharing belongs to all of us. It belongs to every department, all the schools, the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the students, and the family. And everyone has had a role to play in the outcomes that we're about to review today. First, a reminder that our work is integrated with equity in our FFSD anti-racism standards. And our work always impacts our key goals in both the FFSD Strategic Plan and the FFSD CSIP Plan. The data on this slide represents year-to-date information and compares that with data points from the same date in the school year last year. We are optimistic and pleased to report that at this point, our data indicates a 9% decrease in district referrals overall. A 14% decrease in suspensions in grades K through 12. A 22% decrease in referrals as coded as safety incidents. A 41% decrease in grades K through 12 for fighting. And a 47% decrease in referrals coded for fighting in grades 6 through 12. Now for a little bit of a more, of a deeper dive, I'm going to pass the microphone to Dr. Higgins.
Good evening. What you see here is the safety-related incident types that we've identified, which are fighting, physical aggression, threats and intimidation, bullying, harassment, sexual harassment and assault, weapons, and violent acts that are non-physical. You can see on this slide that fighting, which we just discussed, is down 41% district-wide. Also, the other significant improvement you see here is weapons violations, down 79% for an overall reduction, 22% in safety-related incidents. This is a drill down into secondary fighting. What you can see here is that the overall reduction in secondary fighting is 47%. Secondary fights make up 82% of all fights in the district, so 4/5ths. You see that Johnson-Wabash and Cross Keys have a most notable decrease in fights, over 50%. I will continue. You cannot actually see this as well as I can because the chart is off a little bit here. But this is the SCL screening data. And we use the DASET as a universal screener for all students, K-12. What this is showing us is from the fall window of last year to the fall window that just concluded this year, we have a reduction in tiers 2 and 3 from last year to this year. And last year, we had 11% of our students in the tier 3 category, 12% in the tier 2 category, and then 76 in tier 1. If you look over to this year's results, reductions in tier 3 and tier 2 are resulting in 5 percentage point increase in tier 1. Now, 5 percentage point increase might not seem a lot, but that's actually over 400 students who have moved out of tiers 2 and 3 into tier 1, thus not requiring the types of behavioral and SCL interventions that might help them to better access the school environment. What we're seeing with that is an alignment then between positive behavior results and positive SCL results. So this chart has most of what should be here. Dr. Davis asked, with this wonderful discipline or much improved in the first six weeks of the school year, discipline data, what can we identify as the reason for the improvement this year? The answer is, it's early. What we do know is that last year, when community, board, teachers, all stakeholders spoke up and said that safety was a concern in our schools, the board and the district put into place many new initiatives and reinforced significant things already in place through the district, including under tier 1 PBIS universals, our SCL screener, purchased yonder pouches, which anecdotally, teachers are saying are effective for increasing student engagement. We have restorative practices, massive implementation across secondary schools this year, and Open Gate, which is the metal detectors in selected schools. We also have tier 2 and 3 targeted interventions for students in need of those interventions. We've had significant investment in professional development in all of these areas. We can expect that Open Gate metal detectors have had an impact on the 79% decrease in weapons in our schools. We can predict that the effort in the first six weeks of school on restorative practices, specifically hallway supervision, being at the doors, engaging with students, is increasing engagement, increasing relationships, likely to be decreasing fighting. That's one of the goals of the restorative. So as we continue to progress through this school year, we will be monitoring the data, sharing the data, and continuing to try to understand and analyze which of the initiatives are having which impact. But overall, the school board's investment in these initiatives appears in the first six weeks of school to be paying off. Thank you.
What questions might you have for us?
So I will open up the floor. First of all, saying thank you guys for the presentation. I know it was a little short notice when we asked for it, but thank you for pulling it together for us. And so I will start on this end first and then I'll go down. Dr. Paul Walker?
Good evening. One of the questions I have is, you mentioned that restorative practices are being implemented. I think the word you used was massively in secondary schools. And I wondered if you could share some examples of some of the restorative practices that are in the secondary schools?
I can. And what I mean by massively is that we have a massive year-one implementation to provide all secondary staff, and not a train-the-trainer model, all secondary staff with initial professional development and coaching throughout the year. And the first two of the strategies that we learned prior to the students coming for the school year involved the meeting and grading at the door with supervision, increased supervision and relationship building. And then a strategy that is called the 60-second relate break. And this is being implemented in a number of schools very well. But we continue to do walkthroughs and we'll have coaches come from the vendor out in November to every single school to give direct coaching and feedback on what we're doing. Additionally, schools have implementation teams for the response piece of restorative practices for after harm is done. So what we're seeing there is schools have identified at most grade levels 15 or so students that based on the data that we have are more likely to arise conflicts. And for those students, we are making sure to use the tools that we're learning in restorative practices. And it's early to see what impact that's having on reducing future conflicts. But I feel confident that this is a strong implementation and it was a large investment.
Alright, thank you.
Hello. In one of our comments tonight, we heard a statement that said a teacher was unable or having difficulties removing disruptive students from the classrooms. And I'm just curious to know, where do the multi- I don't know how true that is. I guess is what I'm trying to say. But the comment was made and it concerned me because when you're seeing decreases in the data as far as disruptive behavior, but yet I'm hearing it's teachers saying they're having difficulty addressing the behavior because of barriers. Is it forged data, if you know what I'm trying to say? Because if I can't report it, then you can't give me the information. So I'm just curious to know, can we speak to that?
Yeah, I can probably do that, Dr. Higgins. I think it was probably the concern that came from the mom when Dr. Graves was reading her comments. And that was specifically at Walnut Grove. And Dr. Kitson and I are working with Ms. Allen, who's the principal there. They have had some significant concerns. Let me say out loud, Walnut Grove is a pre-K2 school, so these are younger babies. And so we do have some behaviors. And you have to handle younger babies different than you do the older ones. I would suffice to say that, I think I could say that at the secondary level, they're pretty on point. We meet weekly. Our DEC meeting meet weekly on Wednesday or Thursday, specifically looking at cases at the secondary school, which is where most of those cases happen, right? Principals at the secondary schools are on it. We had a principal's meeting this past Monday. And they are constantly, you know, reaching out to our folks on our DC team, excuse me, to get support when students are having those kinds of behaviors. That specific comment, though, was for the pre-K2 school. And I personally call that parent. Dr. Kitson and I will be over. She's been over there quite a bit already. I've been myself, but she's been more than me to support the principal in the school. In fact, Cindy and I had a conversation just today about resources and what's needed at Walnut Grove in particular. So where there are issues, I want to know where they are. And then I want to go and examine them myself so I can get clarity on what it is. Sometimes statements are made and they're blanket statements. And I'm not discounting the statements. So I'm not saying the statements aren't true at all. What I am saying is, I want to see for myself so that we can dig deep and know where and what the problem is. And we can provide the kind of resource that's needed for that particular school. Every school doesn't need what Walnut Grove needs. And so we want to give them what they need. So I personally communicated with the principal myself on Monday about some additional resources that we'll put there. And once we can make sure it's allowable in the budget, we're going to do everything we can.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
I have three short things. One is, what is the role of the Restorative Practice Specialist, the ISS person, playing with all of this? I think this is our exam year to see if we continue funding those because I believe they came out of ESSR funding. And I believe ESSR funding is ending this year, if I'm not mistaken. So just, I'm trying to get clarity as we make a decision fiscally to continue them with restorative practices not really being implemented with them last year from our understanding and really just starting this year, what's their role with that?
Restorative Practices Specialists have actually been getting more training and will be getting significant training on October 19 in restorative practices. And also in how to implement that within their context. They have also been included in our Restorative Practices Implementation Teams. And what that means is that each school that's doing this has identified a group of people, principal, an AP on point, a counselor on point, and so on, social workers, even security, that includes the Restorative Practices Specialists. That person has a major voice and full and complete training in all of the things that leaders are getting training in to implement their restorative practices on the response side. They are also getting trauma-informed training. They are getting branching minds training so that they can record their interventions, their tier 2 and tier 3, and their restorative response interventions into our MTSS intervention- M T S S intervention platform, so that we can track that progress over time. I would say that this will be the best year of leveraging those staff members and individuals, and they actually are, they are a really good group of people, and they do good interventions for students.
Thank you. The other one's kind of similar lines with Mr. Tyson was talking about. So I know over the years, we've had some data presented, and we've seen a reaction from teachers in the audience of just like, how reliable is the data, right? And so I'm just curious, what confidence level do we have that we're actually receiving all the referrals, and people aren't afraid to put referrals in, so we're actually getting the correct data? I know we've had discussions as a board about making sure people know, like, this is not to pinpoint, say, well, this school has more referrals than this school, but really, if we don't know the true picture of what's going on in schools, to Dr. Davis's point, we don't know where to send resources, right? And so what's our confidence level that if we were to show these referral data to schools, that the staff would be like, yeah, that seems about right with the numbers? And if you can't answer it, that's okay.
I can.
Okay.
And that's a mathematical term.
Yes. What's your confidence level?
Ninety-five percent plus.
Okay.
I believe strongly that our principals, our assistant principals, who are the ones who do referrals at schools, who are legally able to do that, are putting those referrals in. They are reaching out to our folks at Central Office to make sure that we can fully support that. You know, in the past, we've had comments from different folks, teachers in particular, you know, questioning some of those things. And so we've examined our system in Tyler. We've examined our process that we have at the district level, and I'm pretty confident that, you know, folks are putting referrals in, and they're being processed in the way they need to be, and we're following policy. You know, there may be cases where someone has a referral and decides not to, you know, go forward with it, a teacher, and that's absolutely fine. Sometimes principals step in and try to support the best ways they can. But I'm pretty confident that folks are following it.
Appreciate that. Last thing related to M T S S, and an ask, I guess, for Madam President also, is at a future meeting related to this. Is there a way we can get an update on the reading success plans and how many of our kids are on it as it relates to M T S S? Because with the state law going into effect, I really have no clue how many kids are on reading success plans. And I want to dive in. I know they just recently, Post-Dispatch has released some data, and we heard some data from parents tonight about our reading levels, so we can all get updated on that.
Yeah, and we can. I'm sorry. No, and Dr. Kitson and Dr. Hazel have been working diligently on that, especially at our elementary schools, implementing the new curriculum. So we can, we'll know that, and we'll bring the data and be able to share an update.
Dr. Martin? I can say that we have the Renaissance screener data. We're able to see that sixty-two percent or so of our students do require reading success plans at this time. We had training today for super users and branching minds for every school. We have training on Friday for I S Ls to be able to write into... The I S Ls trained on the reading success plans and branching minds last year using not Renaissance. They are getting the training in how to do the same intervention plans, but using the Renaissance screening data and the C B Ms for progress monitoring. We will have, the C B Ms have all been conducted, the dyslexia screeners have all been conducted, and within the next couple of weeks, we will have all of the reading success plans in branching minds, and with the intention of starting to monitor those right away.
I want to say, good answer, good answer. Okay. Next. Julia?
Thank you guys so much for your presentation. It was mentioned in the presentation that some of the success that we're seeing right now, you know, it is early. This is the first report of where we're at when it comes to those safety-related incidents. And so when we get another update, I'm guessing, since we're at the end of first quarter, the end of second quarter, and we get another update, for you all, what will it look like to know that we are still being successful with the interventions that we have in place? What should we hope to see to know that success is still, we're still getting there?
My thoughts are, if we're showing, if we continue to show improvement in the safety-related categories, then I think that we have evidence that the interventions that are being applied are having a positive impact. Now, we all know that success for anyone, including children, doesn't go in a straight line. And so we are not going to have a straight path towards success. We will have ups and downs and opportunities to retry and learn. And the data will show that, because we present you with real data. Because real data reflects real children, and part of our approach is that we want to support real, whole children in the area that they need it. So there will be flaws for certain. We will have stumbles. But if we continue to show growth through the process, to me, that's success.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Thurman?
Thank you for your report, and I want to say congratulations to the teachers and administrators who are really working hard to make these numbers, to have these numbers. Hopefully, we will continue to see those numbers increase. I do have a question about, one of the things you mentioned was, one of the universals that we have for six through twelve would be the yonder bags.
Yes.
So my question is, how are you tracking the data on how effective they are and if they're really being used? And how is that affecting what's going on in the classroom? And what do the numbers look like on the discipline for students who are not using the yonder bags the way they should be?
So when students are not using the yonder bags at all, or in the way that they should be, we do have administrators applying consequences and documenting those interventions and consequences into our Tyler Sys database. So we can definitely take a closer look at that data. I think, though, that when you saw the yonder pouches on the list, one of the things that we are theorizing is that the yonder pouches are helping us to avoid conflict during the school day because of the fact that students don't have the opportunity to share things with one another socially through the platforms available on their phones. And as a result of that inability to access that tool, it has allowed peace to become more prominent and pronounced in schools. Now, to draw a straight line for cause and effect is obviously very, very hard, but that's one of the theories that we are believing is at play here. And then the other piece that teachers are sharing frequently is that student engagement is way up. And when students are more engaged in what's happening in their classes, there's less time for other things. And so that's also possibly impacting the numbers as well.
Let me add to that, Dr. Thurman. First, I want to acknowledge Frishan and her team, Frishan House, they're the director for safety and security, because they just landed Ferg floor another grant for three hundred thousand dollars. So give them a round of applause. And that grant will be used for additional safety measures that we'll put in schools. And we've been looking at other districts and things that they're doing that helps teachers and students feel safer. And so we'll absolutely use those dollars this year to bolster even more ways to make our schools feel safer. But to the point around the yonder bags and sort of how they may be impacting discipline, while it's probably difficult, because you don't necessarily track data by who has a yonder bag, who doesn't, what we can do is enforce students having that, because that's one piece that I heard parents say last year about, you got rules, enforce the rules. The kids who do what they're supposed to do, and the ones who don't, didn't enforce the rules. I mean, I heard that from parents often in our town hall meetings, and that's what we're doing. That's what I've encouraged principals to do, is, because most of our children come to school and do exactly what their parents have taught them to. They come to school, they do what they're supposed to, they want to get their education, and we do have some bad actors. And we have to call those bad actors out and do what we can to support them. We can't just throw anybody's child away, but we also have to make sure that we have clear expectations. We've had some students who challenged the yonder bags, and I know that principals have stepped up and said, listen, this is what we're going to do. And so I just want to say that publicly, and it's recorded, that we need parents to keep doing what you're doing, sending students to us, so we can teach them like you want us to. And then those who are having challenges, we're going to take action as fast as we can. It's not easy. But let me tell you something, we're not, I'm not even suggesting where we need to be. I know we have a lot of work still to do. But what I can tell you is that folks are working diligently to make our schools safer, to make sure we have more structures in place, and we're writing grants and doing things to put even more things in place. So, you know, we're not there yet, but what I can tell you is that folks are committed to the work, and that's encouraging.
And I don't mean to beat the yonder bags to death. My daughter, Ten, is one of the high schools there. So I can tell you firsthand, she was a bad apple at first, just being fully transparent, you know, the first day. But she told me when she came home, just saying some good things about Ferg floors, that she is engaged, and she feels safe. And I'm not just saying as a board member, I'm talking as a parent right now. And that's a good thing. And I want to make sure that's highlighted and documented, that, you know, she felt safe, and she is engaged. And a lot of the parents have been saying the same thing, when I do my daughter drop off and picks up, pick up some different things like that. And just keep on trying to move in the right direction. I know we're going to have dips and all of that, but I just want to keep stressing, just keep on pushing, just make sure that we get to reach our goals, and make sure our kids, our family, and our community feel safe.
So once again, thank you guys so much for presenting. The next presentation will be in another quarter, as we would like. And I think, for me, one of the things that I would like to see is just some of the data aggregated, and so just a little bit more details for us. But other than that, thank you so much, and like, once again, sorry for the late notice.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
All right. The next thing is agenda item number eight, twenty-twenty-three Cube Annual Award for Urban School Board of Excellence. Missouri's Ferguson-Floreson School Board is the recipient of the twenty-twenty-three Cube Annual Award for Urban School Board Excellence. The award established in two thousand and four recognizes Cube member districts for excellence in school board performance, academic improvement, educational equity, and community engagement. Located in the city of Hazelwood in suburban St. Louis County, the nine thousand five hundred student Ferguson-Floreson School District stated mission is to provide high-quality instruction to every student in every neighborhood while prioritizing equity and compassion relationships. Focused on data-driven decision-making and evidence-based practices, the Ferguson-Floreson School Board works toward measurable improvements in student achievement and narrowing opportunity gaps. It recently adopted a series of anti-racist standards to further educational equity for all students, especially those most marginalized. Did we have the video?
Yes.
And we would now show the video that was shown at this last Cube Conference.
The Ferguson-Floreson School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than ten thousand students from preschool through twelfth grade within excellent, comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson-Floreson School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second-grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth-grade centers, three middle schools, including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school, which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and N C A C A S I accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and a STEAM high school focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top twelve percent of high schools in Missouri and in the top thirty-five percent of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, Avid, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of F F S D students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness, and has increased the four-year graduation rate to ninety-three percent. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a ninety-seven-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg floor care health clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees, demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. In two thousand and eighteen, the Board adopted an equity resolution, and between two thousand and twenty-two, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the Board's adoption of the Ferguson-Floreson School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson-Floreson School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all.
So let me say, yes. This is the award that this school board got. It's the school board, not me, the school board got this, and this is a national award, okay? And so I know that things aren't always the best, and I know that folks can often, you know, say what things aren't happening. But let me tell you that, we have more students in the last three years taking A P courses, I B courses, getting credit for those courses. The gentleman mentioned earlier, I too, I live in Ferguson. I bought a house in Ferguson. I pay taxes in Ferguson. So I also contribute to this economy. My son went to school here. Let me tell you that, when I look at what's going on around this country and the things that are happening in our district, we have a lot to be proud of. This is a place where we wanted to be a destination. And I'm telling you that, people know Ferguson from what happened ten years ago with Michael Brown. And I know that we've allowed other people to write our story. But I said then, and I'll say now, we can write our own story. We are providing quality education for many of our students. Yeah, we still have a long way to go, there's a lot of work still to do, but we've got to celebrate those things that are happening well, because there are so many of those things. Let me tell you that, black boys in this district, ninety-four percent of them graduate in four years. That just doesn't happen, y'all. So when you look around this country and look at the work that's happening here, there are good things happening in our community. And I was quite proud to stand with the Board on that stage in Chicago a couple of weeks ago and accept that award on their behalf. So I would ask you to join me in giving them a round of applause. I'll end by saying, we had a few students this past year who graduated from our high schools and went to college as sophomores, as sophomores, right? So great things are happening. So I would ask you to join in the good, the bad ain't going nowhere, right? So what we do is, we acknowledge it, and as TD Jakes said, you know, life hits you in the gut sometimes, and all I need you to do is survive. You may cry if you must, but survive. And we're surviving, and we're going to be thriving, but it takes us working hard together to make that happen. So I'm proud to be a part of this community. I'm proud to be a homeowner in this community, and proud that my son is a graduate of this school district as well. So thank you, and let's give our Board one more round of applause for that.
All right. I just kind of want to open the floor to any board members that want to just talk about the conference briefly, if they just want to mention something. I know you didn't prepare anything, but just to say, if anybody wants to say anything. And if not, I can adjourn, but go ahead.
I'll just go really quick. It was my first time at the conference, being a new board member. I will say it was very beneficial. I'm able to bring back a lot of, because I'm one of those people, when you go to conferences, you need to be able to bring things back and tools and stuff. I wrote a lot of notes down, connected with a lot of people, and I'm ready to bring a lot back to what I learned from the conference to help me be a better board member.
I also want to say, I am just, it was just an honor to be recognized nationally, and to look at this video, and if you all listen to all the things that's going on in this district, yes, we have a long way to go, but we're working. The Board is committed to making this a quality, quality place for students to come and to grow. grow. And part of that is because we have wonderful teachers, wonderful administrators, we've got your back, we're really, really trying to push and make sure that all those numbers that you heard today, some of them are negative numbers, but we're going to improve on those numbers. I think the commitment is there for every teacher who's standing in those classrooms. And I just wanted each one of the teachers to know that we support you. I know you can't do this by yourself. We see you, we hear you, and we're going to do the best to support you as much as we can. I am very proud of this award. And I will tell you that at the conference, one of the things that happened when we got the award is, we have been sought out. The board members were sought out, and they asked about many of the things that we're doing in Ferg floor, and they're wanting to come here, and they want to look at what we're doing here. That speaks volumes, you guys. You guys are doing a great job. Don't beat yourselves up. Do not beat yourselves up. And the board is going to listen, and we're going to provide for you as much as we can, give you the things that you need, the tools you need, the resources that you need as much as we can. So please don't beat yourselves up. And again, let's tell our story. Let's tell our complete story, the good, the bad, and the whatever, okay? So again, I am, and I don't say this a lot, I'm just, I'm very proud of this board. We have really worked hard, we work hard, and you all don't see everything. You know, you hear things out there, but you don't know what's going on behind closed doors. So I just want to say to my fellow board members, thank you for the work that you do, and I really appreciate each and every one of you. If no one else does, I love you and can't do anything about it.
I guess what I'd like to say about the conference is, there were many sessions. Originally, I wasn't going to be going to CUBE. And then when we were to get this award, I wanted to be able to, I was fortunate enough to be able to adjust my schedule, so I was able to be there with our other board members. And I'm very happy that I was able to go. I think that what CUBE does so well is it offers a space where we can go and we can really learn more about not only what it is to be a board member, but how to really live our role the best way that we can. And that's one of the biggest things that I think I've been learning in my first year and a half on the board. The other piece that I just wanted to talk about that felt very special and I'm very happy to have been a part of is Dr. Davis and Ms. Tamoyo Rose Watson, they did a session at the CUBE conference, and they invited the board members to come up and, going back to that whole share our story, share each of our individual stories of our experiences here in the Ferguson-Floreson School District. And I just, to see the passion that our leaders in our district have for our kids and for our community is just a beautiful, wonderful thing. And to be able to share that stage with them as they do tell our story and as they do teach what they do best, teach, it was just wonderful. And I really look forward to getting to see you all in action more.
There is a, this is the pastor coming on now. There's a passage that says that a prophet has no honor in his own home. And as a father, sometimes I don't feel appreciated at home. I don't, I don't. And I come to realize that my children do not have my experience. So what I've given them is normal to them. It was a sacrifice for me, but it's their normal, right? So Tyson, what are you trying to say? Guys, when we were there with thousands of school board members across this country, and to be recognized nationally for the work that we do, it was humbling. Because I come home and feel like I have no honor. You guys paid me a whole lot of money to be up here. But you got to know, man, that I'm doing this because I love our children. I may not make every decision you think is right, but please know that I'm making the decisions that I think are right for all our children, not just one. And early on, I got beat up because I had a child that graduated. And I'm sorry that I'm going to boast on my child, who's now got an internship at a veterinarian, and I'm going to boast because he's Ferguson product. You know what I mean? My child, but he's a product of Ferguson-Floreson. As a sophomore, now he's got an internship to be a veterinarian at Alabama NEM, 3.7 grade point average, and I didn't even think he was going to graduate high school. So forgive me, right? Forgive me for being passionate about the love that I have for this district, right? And I see the struggles. I mean, I know we got problems, but we could do this together. Together, we could do this. Together, we can do this. It's hard to do it by ourselves. Together, we could do this. And again, to stand there and, well, as she said, that we all gave our story, they all talked so much, I didn't even get a chance to, right? They left me out, right? But it was pretty good, because, you know, you can't give it past her mic.
You ended it with a powerful statement.
What did I say? I did say something, didn't I? I forgot what it was, but it was pretty good. But ultimately, guys, what I want to say is, I love you all. There's nothing you could do about it. Know that I sit here because I love our students. I salute every teacher, every administrator in this district. You know I hear you. We couldn't do it without you. Each time I get an opportunity, I thank you. And I genuinely mean that because our students are because of you. My child is, because like you were saying, Doug, I mean, I think, I felt him at home because I don't know a thing about math, right? He looking at me to help him with some stuff, and I'm like, you better call Dr. Davis, because I don't know. But to see what this child is doing today because he came through one of our schools, you know, is just amazes me, man. And I'm just so proud of our district, and I'm so proud to receive that award. Thank you.
So one thing apart about getting this award, next year in April, we get to go present on a national level, the entire school board. We get to teach a master class. In addition to that, we also will be doing a couple of web, web, webinars, that's the word I'm looking for, a couple of webinars, just kind of talking about our work in board development. But at the end, we want to share this award with you guys, because we cannot be what we are without you guys truly doing the work. So not only is this an award for the board, but it's our community's award. And I guarantee you, this is the first, but it will not be the last. And so with that, I say good night, and we will adjourn back to close.
Second, all right. Roll call, please. Roll call. To go back.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Secretary votes aye, Ms. Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Martin. Mr. Tyson. Dr. Powell Walker. Madam President.
Yes, thank you guys so much for coming out tonight.